City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded October 16, 2023.
At seven o'clock, we'll call the regular Common Council Meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Christensen?
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Keemer?
Yeah.
Burr?
Here.
Plissans?
Here.
Niebon?
Here.
Shuda?
Here.
Lang?
Here.
Fishler?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
If we do have a quorum, please join me with our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some large items on the agenda tonight, so we will forego most of the mayor's opening remarks. I did want to let people know that working with our associate planner, Adam Kuhn, and being that we are an age-friendly community, we are forming an ad hoc age-friendly committee group. We've got some nominees for that already. I'll be putting that together over the next day or two. If anyone is interested in serving, the point is to make sure that Stevens Point is accessible for people of all ages. That doesn't mean people my age. That means younger people as well. So if you're interested in making sure that our community is accessible for people of all ages and have things for all people of all ages to do, by all means, give me a call, send me an email, and we'll get that squared away. I also wanted to point out Maxwell's here, so we will be forming a sustainability ad hoc committee as well. That committee is going to be designed to, first and foremost, get a base reading of our carbon footprint and our energy consumption. Most of that information should be available pretty easily, and then we're going to be working on recommendations to try and reduce that. Our staff does an excellent job of that already, but building on some of the things that we've already done, as a matter of fact, we had a meeting today unrelated to that group, that is going to hopefully put a project on the table for 2024, maybe 2025, again, with those sustainability initiatives. As you probably know, our utility department now has their first fully electric vehicle as well, so we're getting there. We're making progress all the time, and this group will help measure those successes. And with that, I will move on to item number three. Persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing must register their request at this time. Those who want to address the council on a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by the mayor. We do not have any public hearings on the agenda this evening, so anybody that wants to speak on an agenda item but has not signed up, is there anyone? Show of hands, maybe? All right, I think we're good. Then I'll move on to item number four, and that's persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item. First up, we have Tim Hanley. Mr. Hanley, if you could approach the lectern, state your name and address, and provide your testimony.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Tim Hanley. I live at 2849 Ellis Street, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. Good evening. I'm here tonight to express my frustration and disappointment in the recent work the city has undertaken in reconstructing the sound system at the football stadium at Gerke Park. I'm also requesting that the city immediately undergo a redesign and take corrective action to remedy this situation. The noise it generates is intrusive and over-the-top loud. When I'm at home, inside my home, with the windows closed, the doors closed, I can hear every play call and booming music that is played. I could not sit quietly and read a book. With the television on, I hear the music and the play announcing as a constant background noise. I find it totally unacceptable. I've spoken to some neighbors, and some have expressed similar outrage. Again, I live at 2849 Ellis Street. I've talked to neighbors on Algoma, and they're also upset about it. So I've raised my concerns to my older person, Mr. Shore, via several emails, and I've asked him to talk with me. We've corresponded email-wise. He advised me to come to the council tonight, to let my frustration be known. In my view, it's a complete failure in the design of that installation, and I don't know who's responsible for it. The sound system should have been designed to provide an experience in the stadium for those who want to attend the game or event, and should not intrude into people's homes. If I wanted to attend an event, I would. I don't like forced into me I don't like the noise forced into my privacy of my home. I'd like to know who designed the sound system, and I'd like to come and look at the records or the design plan for that sound system. So please consider this a request. Please direct me, Mayor or council persons, where I can come and look at that design. I would like to, because I can't believe it's been designed. I think it's a failure. Why are there not four speakers in the stadium to redirect the sound and evenly distribute it? Why have one speaker up high blasting every neighborhood in this city? I was just looking at your agenda tonight. I find it interesting. You have item six on the agenda. You're talking about the neighborhood of Gerke Park and Washington School, and you give a boundary. I live outside that neighborhood, yet I got to put up with the crappy noise that's generated by that facility. So I would hope your comprehensive plan would address that. I also would hope that you would take immediate redesign actions. I purchased my home 20 years ago, and I approximately and I expected some stadium noise, and in the old system, I would hear a loud, a big, good play, a little roar. That became normal background noise. This new setup is far worse than that. I just have one last comment to make. I've been told that I should call the police department for noise abatement and complain. I haven't done that. I think that's one of the worst suggestions I've heard. My police captain or chief, I'm sure, has better things to do than run around and babysit noise complaints on a city-designed stadium system that shouldn't be like it is. So again, I'm asking my older person and the city to take immediate action and remedy that situation.
Thank you very much. Normally, we don't do this, but I know this is a hot-button issue. So, Mr. Hanley, I can tell you that since the stadium sound system went into place, both older person Shore, the police department director, Parks Director Dan Kramer, have been working with people to try and find a medium that people can agree to. They have put some policies in place to try and make sure that that noise is kept to a minimum outside, but still allow for the sound system to be used as it was intended to be used. And honestly, the only way we can enforce that is if people call the police department. The police department will respond, make sure that the policies that we've implemented are being adhered to. So it's important that you do that. I know the chief probably has better things to do, but we want to make sure that we get this squared away.
I went over to the stadium one night to examine, to see for myself. The noise in the stadium was at this level. I actually talked to two officers at the stadium, and I was surprised that I could talk to them. But while I was talking with them, the officer got a phone call about a noise problem, and I could tell that he was not comfortable listening about it, and he was hawing with his partner. Jeez, I got to go up and tell him to turn the button down? I don't think it's a button problem, Mayor. It's a poor design problem, and again, please direct me to...
Director Kramer, can you raise your hand? That's the person you're going to want to speak to either after the meeting or tomorrow. That's Director of Parks Recreation and Forestry.
Okay, because I want to see, was there a design done on that system?
Yes, there was. Next up, Liz McDonald.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. I'm Liz McDonald, 1760 Strong's Avenue. My issue also is parks, but it's a totally different issue. When the Edgewater property was torn down, I looked at that space and thought it was perfect for park expansion. Community development, and the mayor confirmed that it was identified for development, but that nothing would be happening for several years because of the lease held by Children Wisconsin for the concrete block building on the south end of the property. So I was surprised to hear that an RFP was ready to be released, a copy of which is in your packet for tonight's meeting. It's not too late to reconsider. Why park? First and foremost, it is, without a doubt, the most expensive piece of undeveloped real estate in the city, and we already own it. We do not have to spend any money to acquire it, and if it does go for development, chances are that there will be some financial incentive for a developer, which, if history is followed, will cost the city plenty. Throughout the state, cities are enhancing waterfront property, usually for public use. Why would we, why would anyone, give up this choice piece of real estate? Once we give it up, the city would never be able to afford to buy it back. I mean, it's ours. Let's keep it. Secondly, there has been a big push in recent years for housing development in the central city and downtown area. Berkshire, directly across the street from Edgewater, has 88 units. North Point Yards has 213. A conservative population for these 301 units is 450 people, who have no green space at their residence. Pifner, Mead, and Buchholz are already heavily used, and there is a constant push to add more things to those spaces. Population density does matter when considering the adequacy of parkland. I have talked to quite a few city residents about this, and if you did a poll, or if you were put into a vote, there would be overwhelming support for a park at this location. To most people that I have talked to, it's a no-brainer. Hate to use that expression, but it's true. The city missed out on acquiring the property in Buchholz Park that now has a massive house on it. We also did not acquire the former Ratchak property on the north end of Buchholz. People still ask how it came to be that a bank is basically in the south end of Pifner Park, and that was, what, 30 years ago? Let's not make that same mistake again. While I strongly believe that a park is the highest and best use of this property, I do realize that you might not all see the issue this way. In looking at the RFP, I would suggest or ask that, at the very least, a city-owned corridor for the Green Circle path be maintained, as is outlined in the RFP, instead of an easement. Additionally, the proposed parcel being offered should end where the edge of the Edgewater parking lot was, not going with that additional triangle land to the north of the Edgewater footprint. With the Shopko acquisition and the lands purchased on the east side of the city, there are plenty of places to build the tax base. Let's not be short-sighted. What will the residents say in 10 or 20 years when looking at the decisions you are making now that affect quality of life for Stevens Point in the future? Please be big-picture, long-range thinkers. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And just for a point of information, 30 years ago was 1993. Bank's been around longer than that. It doesn't seem like that long ago, right?
Nineties, were you? Okay.
Yeah. 1993 was 30 years ago, and the bank was, what, '83, '84, something like that?
But people still ask about it.
Oh, yeah. Yep, I agree. All right, our speaker's list is exhausted. We will move on to our consent agenda items. We do have one correction, and that is the very first line says the minutes of the Common Council Meeting of August 18th. That should be September 18th. So just note that as a correction. Did anyone else have any corrections or anything they wanted to pull from the consent agenda? Otherwise, I'd accept the motion.
Motion's approved.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Seconded by President Christensen. Discussion? Hearing none. I'm sorry, comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, would you please call that roll?
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plissans?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number six is a resolution, a request from the city of Stevens Point to amend the city of Stevens Point comprehensive plan for the purpose of adding a chapter outlining a neighborhood comprehensive plan for the Gerke Park, Washington Elementary School neighborhood. Said neighborhood is roughly bounded by Maria Drive to the north, I-39 to the east, Main Street to the south, and Division Street to the west. That comprehensive plan is the one we've been talking about for, well, months. And with all respect to the earlier speaker, the volume at Gerke should not be in the comprehensive plan. That's something that needs that's a small detail that can be handled internally, but any comments or a motion?
I'll move approval of the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
One second.
We'll give the second to shoot out. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Up to the lectern, please. I did recommend that in the future we try and break things into a little bit smaller, because we've got three Aldermatic districts that are in that neighborhood right now, so...
Mayor, I would respectfully disagree with you on that comprehensive plan. I believe it should address the surrounding neighborhoods and the noise that is generated from a major facility like a stadium. I think it's a failure in the comprehensive plan not to address a major generator. The stadium generates a lot of traffic. The stadium generates a lot of noise. So I would respectfully ask that you reconsider that, Mayor. It's not just a button or a sound thing. It's a fundamental generator in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Alder Shore?
Just a few different remarks. First, to thank staff for all the work that went into the plan. Second, to say along with that how great it was to have so much community involvement. The plan was shaped over many months through many meetings. I remember one where we did an evening walking tour of Stanley Street and noticed that it was hard to tell that there were businesses there. This is kind of a favorite issue of mine, I'll admit, and the mayor has made the point that it's such a big district that there are some different issues, and I think that's true of Stanley Street in particular, because at the west end, more where I am, there's, you know, more of a sense of need for smaller businesses. There's a reference in the plan to opportunities for redevelopment down the line. And on the issue of the sound system, speaking for myself anyway, when I say that this isn't a comprehensive plan issue, that's because the sound system we're dealing with, like, right now, and intensely so, it's a now issue, whereas the comprehensive plan is about the years ahead. But on that difference of different parts, different areas, the relationship between the neighborhood and businesses to the east end of Stanley Street, I realize, is different, that there's some issues of light pollution, I think, some sensitivity to some of the, I don't know, I think the car lots and the QuickTrip as neighbors, although Alder Shuda would certainly know more about that than I. But just to say, there are different parts and pieces of that big neighborhood, but I think that a lot of great, important points are captured in the plan, and it's going to be a good guide going forward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would echo what Alderman said, but it's nice to know that we have a living, breathing document that we can, we have a base of which to go on, but we can always change it and move forward, and so can the people of Stevens Point. They can address us at any time to begin that process of change if needed.
Excellent. Thank you. Any additional comments? Yes, ma'am.
From the perspective of a former neighborhood planner, I think the approach that's being taken here, coming from the ground up, is going to create a lot of buy-in from people in the neighborhoods. And I think rather than planners sitting around a map in a room, this is the way to do it. So I congratulate the staff on this approach.
Absolutely. Yeah, this is something we hadn't done before, and for those of you who are unfamiliar with the frame of reference, normally, we would have meetings like this, talk about things, and that would be our plan. But what we've done with staff now is having neighborhood meetings, almost social gatherings, something more informal, and multiple meetings to try and make sure everybody has an opportunity to weigh in on what their thoughts and feelings are in regards to where the neighborhood should be going, and I really think it's been working out pretty well. Any additional comments? Okay, then I will ask the clerk for a roll call vote, please.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Plissans?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number seven is a request from the city of Stevens Point to purchase property located at 1200 Main Street with the parcel identified in your packet, also known as the old Shopko building, the current Halloween store, yeah, that area.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Seconded by Lang. What was it? Thank you. Discussion? Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Clerk, could you please call that roll?
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plissans?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number eight is some 2024 health insurance benefit design changes and wellness incentive changes. Comptroller Treasurer Lattick, with the assistance of HR Manager Frosch. Whoever wants to talk to the group about the changes, please.
Sure, I'm here, so I can cover it. So we do have to make some changes to our health insurance benefit design. The reason why actually has to do with IRS regulations. We have a health savings account eligible plan, which means we need to have a minimum deductible. And right now, that deductible is 1,500, single, 3,000, family. And the IRS is raising that minimum deductible for 2024, so we need to raise our deductibles as well. What we're proposing is going with 1,800, single, 3,600, family. And the thought process there is that the IRS has been raising that threshold by about $100 to $200 every year, and we'd like to be set for about three years before we have to revisit this and change the deductibles again. And then the other thing that I want to point out is, as part of this, we are proposing there's a maximum deductible plus coinsurance amount. So basically, once you hit your deductible, then the employee pays 10%. The health plan pays 90%, up to a maximum of 2,500, 5,000. We're recommending keeping that the same, so that the maximum liability to the employees does not increase with this change. And then as a further, kind of just a spoonful of sugar to help the medicine go down, is increasing the wellness incentive as well. That's what helps our employees pay their deductibles. So since the deductibles would be increasing by 20%, the thought process is increasing that health savings account incentive for participating in the wellness program by 20% as well. So that would mean that you can earn a maximum of $600 if you're on a single plan or $1,200 if you're on a family plan. So, and then also, I apologize for the abruptness of how this kind of came forward. We were planning on bringing this forward in November, and then our insurance company kind of informed us that they actually wanted a decision sooner than that, so that's why it went straight to council.
And just for some clarification, for those of you who may not know, the employee incentive, we have a wellness program that employees do a health risk assessment, some blood work, and some fitness testing. If they participate in that, they can actually earn money that the city puts into their health savings account to help offset those deductibles. So, questions for the comptroller?
Which option are you recommending?
So we're recommending option number three of the proposed options. So that one would be the one that's the most favorable to our employees. You know, we did talk about, okay, you know, if you increase the deductible, would you also increase the max out-of-pockets as well? But we didn't think that that was a good idea if we didn't have to do that, so we're recommending option number three.
Okay. Questions or a motion?
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I'm going to be recusing myself from this. I don't think it's really going to impact me. My wife is an employee, but as of this weekend, she's 65, so she'll be on social security, so... But just for...
Fair enough.
...visibility, I will be recusing myself.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Still moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Fishler. Discussion?
We'll start on this side. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I appreciate the efforts by the comptroller to sort of navigate and balance both the federal requirements, but keeping things, you know, affordable for the employees. I mean, healthcare costs are just going to continue to go up and up, and that's a big burden for a lot of individuals and families, so... Yeah, I thought it was really smart to, yeah, increase the wellness incentive and keep the out-of-pocket max high, so thank you for navigating that tightrope.
Thank you. Yeah, it's been rough for both the HR manager and the comptroller treasurer. As you can imagine, this is kind of a busy time with open enrollment, a pay plan, the budgets. Yeah, I'd have the insurance company say, hey, can you get us an answer by the end of the week? Does someone on this end have a comment?
Yeah, I was going to echo that as a stated plan myself. Health insurance costs keep going up and up, and the health savings account is really, really good, but it's like, just go through the door at the EER rooms, 500 bucks before you even see someone. So that takes out money there. So, I mean, it's just one of those things you just kind of have to live with, and whatever we're able to do to help.
Yep, and I think the comptroller would agree with me. Our staff has been doing a pretty good job of helping keep our expenses low, because we're self-insured, of course. But by keeping those expenses low, we can make sure everybody else, everybody who's on the plan, kind of benefits from that. All right, so any other comments? Up to the lectern, please. Let me tell you what, if you do have questions, contact Sandy tomorrow or Cory. We just need it so people at home and on the video can hear you. All right, you sure? All right, anything else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Plissans?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Christensen abstained.
All right, that is approved. Item number nine is approval of the 2024 capital budget. We introduced that a few months back, working with staff. Your staff, again, did an excellent job, making sure that only the important things are on there, and then we had to whittle those around. As you know, this year, we are asking for a little bit more money just because we need to make sure that we keep up with the properties that we have and the machinery that we have, making sure that they're in good repair. And the 2024 proposed capital budget is before you now for consideration of approval.
Move to approve the budget?
Thank you.
Capital budget.
Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Keemer. Discussion?
We have talked about this for a long, long, long time, and it's always a hard choice of what to do and what we cannot do. And it's like, and there's always feelings that are going to be hurt and priorities that, as the mayor said, you have to kind of wiggle around, because there's only so much money.
Well, and I got to say, the staff has been really, really creative about finding solutions, whether that is doing partial things to keep up maintenance or finding equipment that serves more than one purpose, or making sure that the piece of equipment that we're buying has low maintenance upkeep or is fuel-efficient or even electric to try and keep the operational costs down to a minimum as well. So your staff really deserves the pats on the back. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plissans?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 10 is a presentation and interview of the fourth district alderperson candidates and a subsequent appointment. For the record, if you don't choose any of the candidates tonight, you don't need to pick someone. Just want to be clear on that, because it says subsequent appointment. If you choose a candidate tonight, they will be appointed tonight, sworn in, but you can also choose none if you so choose. And we had two candidates that met the deadline. We have Lara Brodrick and Marvin Hafenbreidel. I see Lara's here. Is Marv here?
I understand Marv is coming. He's not here. Marv is here? Is he on his way, or...?
Sure. I mean, if you want. Clerk, you did have someone contact each of the candidates, right?
Bethany should have contacted him on Friday.
Just go ahead. Just go ahead.
So the candidate that is present is Lara. Lara's declaration of candidacy, a resume, and a cover letter were included in your packet. Lara, we're going to put you on the spot. Can you maybe come up to the lectern? Please. It is Lara, right?
Yes, Lara, not Lauren.
Right.
That about correct people and solve...
No, you. No, you. I would start at District 1, and we'll, if you have a question for the... I would start at District One, and will, if you have a question for the candidate, I would encourage you to ask that now, to help you make your decision.
Sure. Two years ago, I was standing in your same spot in being appointed and going through the interview process. I guess just a good starting point would be, why do you think you would like to fulfill this role? And if you are chosen, would you be willing to, would you be planning on running for election in this coming spring?
Well, I can answer the second half of that first, because that's an easy answer. Absolutely, if I am appointed today, I will have a few months of trial by fire. I understand with the timing that the declare of candidacy for that April election is coming up in December already, so I do want to be clear upfront, that decision for me is already made. I will definitely be running. You haven't seen the last of me tonight, whether or not you choose to appoint me to the council. In terms of why I want to run, I am just someone who really feels strongly about local politics. I think especially these days, it seems like every day, things are getting more polarized, it's getting harder and harder to sit down and have a conversation with someone and align on values. To me, that local scope is where things really happen. That's where people can sit down and agree, because we're talking about issues that very much affect people, a day-to-day scope, right? For that reason, I have always had a ton of respect for our local office holders. To be honest, I was always a little intimidated by the idea of running myself. I was actually approached for this position, and it asked if I was interested in running in April. The timing just so happened that this appointment became available sooner than that, so I did already have it on my mind. This was just sort of the push, deadline is coming up in two weeks, submit your papers. So that was it, I figured it was a perfect time. This is sort of the first time in my life that I have had a very stable career and life situation. I'm working full-time, no, I've been out of college for a few years, I've sort of established my career path. I am ready to start looking at how I can give back to my community, and I believe that I will be a really great fit for this role. So to me, that is a mutually beneficial situation. I hope I can convince you of that as well tonight.
Thank you.
Alder Shore?
Thank you, Mayor. Picking up on this issue of running, we always want to know that, and the reason is that, you know, we appoint someone just to fill the months, and so there's representation, but really, you know, the proper people to make the choice are the constituents and voters of the district. And so I always ask the same question, it's a little bit open-ended, but just to give you a chance to talk a little bit more even about, as you're considering this, how you view the basic role we play, how you view, you know, kind of the nature of this role of this job, and what you will be thinking of most as, you know, from these chairs, and any issues that you're passionate about and would expect to pursue.
Absolutely, I will apologize if I don't hit on all of those pieces, since there's a lot to cover there. Firstly, I just want to say that I believe the most important role of a alderperson in this council is to be a mouthpiece for the constituents. It is, of course, great when we have individual things that we're passionate about, that we want to change. To me, that can almost be a little bit dangerous. I am not someone who wants to come into this office saying, I want to change X, Y, and Z. I think that that does a disservice to the fact that this role exists to allow us to advocate for the people in our district. As of right now, I have not talked to as many people in my district as I would like to, especially as I continue to consider running in April. My goal is to knock on every single door and get people to talk to me about what's on their mind. To me, that is very open-ended, so I hesitate to say this is what I'm most interested in, without having done that full due diligence of talking to everyone and getting an idea for what those most important things are in the district. I do think that it is important to have a process for how you will address the sorts of things that you will hear, which is something I'm confident on. I don't know how many of you had the chance to review the documentation prior to this meeting, but my career is in IT. I'm an IT supervisor, so I do have a ton of experience hearing a lot of people who are upset. Those people may or may not even really know how to verbalize what it is they're upset about, or how to talk about it in the most effective way. So there's sort of that role of being a translator there, talking to people, understanding what they're upset about, what the core values around that issue are, and then figuring out how to translate that into actionable items where we, when on the council, have an ability to make change. So for me, that's the most important thing, is my focus on that part of the process, that listening, asking the right questions, getting a feel for what the constituents are interested in, and then doing my absolute best to be an advocate for those interests.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Lara. Thank you for your courage and your initiative. It does take a lot to get up to that podium and answer questions from, you know, a table of people, so much kudos to you for that. I guess my question would be, you know, given what you know of your neighborhood and your neighbors and your potential constituents, how would you describe, you know, the range of needs or the range of residents, just kind of, you know, there's a spectrum of people who live in your community that may have different thoughts or ideas, and given what you've experienced, how would you describe that?
Well, the number one word I'd use to describe the neighborhood that I live in now is friendly. District Four is really that nice little residential area, far enough away from the college that there aren't a ton of kids still going to school, very much a lot of young professionals, young families, people who are buying a house for the first time, and a lot of folks from the older generation who have lived in their same house for decades. They have been in the process of raising a family for a long time. So there's definitely a fair amount of diversity there, and competing interests from people who are very different ages, from very different beliefs. I do think there are a few issues that just absolutely affect everyone right now. Inflation, rising cost of living, everyone who has a paycheck has to deal with how to pay for things, and that is becoming harder and harder every day. Housing, again, a giant issue that I think probably affects everyone who lives in any district in our city, particularly in this little residential slice of District Four. You see it all the time, folks are looking to buy a house, they've been renting, they're barely able to scrape together money to pay rent, and now they're here, they're competing on the market, and they get outbid. I know that whole process is just very frustrating and difficult, so if there is one issue that I come here and say this is something I'm passionate about, if I can affect a change, here's where it would be, it would be housing. I think that's probably the number one issue affecting both residents in my district and for me personally, as a younger person who is still renting and is looking to buy a house in the district in the fairly near future. I think that is probably the biggest issue. We, of course, have the two parks in District Four, of Bouquelin and Fefner, which are sort of like the gems of the community, in my opinion. I might be a little biased here, coming from District Four. But I know that that relationship with the parks, too, is really important, especially in our district, where people sort of balance having that community space with having privacy in their community, and how we sometimes see that those are competing needs, as we heard about tonight. So it's my hope to be able to balance that the best I can, by talking to as many people as I possibly can. Thank you.
Alder Presum Burr?
I'm going to grab some water.
You don't have to ask a question if you don't?
Yeah, no, I don't really have any questions, I just want to, sorry, kind of echo what Alder Keimer said, and just kudos for running and getting up there, and I'm lucky I didn't have to stand up there and answer questions to be elected.
We're stepping out, very nerve-wracking, and you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Alder Presum Plissance, anything?
No questions, just one quick comment. A couple weeks ago, in your district at Madison Elementary School, I attended a meeting, I'm on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission, and they are concerned about sidewalks and the lack of them in right around the school itself. So if you do get this position, please contact the principal at that school and follow up.
Absolutely, thank you. That is a wonderful lead into one of the items I'll need to consider first and foremost if I'm appointed tonight. Thank you.
Alder Niebon?
I don't really have any questions either. And again, congratulations on your willingness to open yourself up to all sorts of interesting comments that may come your way. One of the best pieces of advice is to get a thick skin.
Yes.
Alder Shuda?
Just to kind of follow up, you mentioned housing would be your number one issue. Like, what would you do?
This is, again, a point where I have to say that I am not an expert here. That is certainly not my professional area of expertise. I am coming in as a novice to say this is something I care about. I think it is far too big of an issue for one person to say I have all the answers. That's just simply not the nature of something like that, that affects everyone, and affects everyone in so many different ways. So again, I would just fall back on saying that while I don't have an easy solution, I do have a process. Step one in that process is identifying resources. We have a fabulous city staff here who is much more knowledgeable in zoning, all kinds of different issues that affect this housing environment that we're looking at. My number one step would be to start forming those relationships with the people who are much more knowledgeable than I am, building my own understanding, so that I am in a better place to say, here's what I think we should do, and have a larger fund of knowledge behind that. It would be easy to say, here's the one thing I think we should do, and everyone will be able to buy a house tomorrow, but I think we can all appreciate it's a much more complicated situation than that, and I am here to be humble and say I have a lot to learn. Hope that I can inspire some belief in me tonight.
Just say thank you for, you know, stepping up for your community and trying to take on a role in representation. I'd like to ask you if you are appointed to this role, you said that your passion is housing, we've covered that, is there, how would I want to say this, is there a area of need that you've noticed in your district when it comes to housing?
Specifically, I do think it is the ability for folks who have been trapped in that renting cycle to try and break out of it. And that's not even necessarily, is there a house for you to move into, but are you enabled to save up? Are there resources to allow you to get assistance with things like a down payment? There are a lot of different factors there. Again, very huge, complicated issue, a lot of different considerations. I don't know how well I can address that directly, but I hope I can give you all an idea of what my sort of approach would be to a thorny situation like that.
Alder Fischler?
I also had to interview, so I can completely understand where you are right now, it's not a great place to be. But I do appreciate you taking the, you having a lot of courage to run and to put your hat in the ring, so to speak, and, yeah, you're doing really excellent right now, so I just want to let you know that. One question I do have is, so on council, a lot of time we're tasked with making really difficult decisions. So my question to you is, how would you handle those difficult decisions, and what steps would you take to make those, I guess, easier decisions?
So firstly, I appreciate the positive feedback tonight. I have terrifying stage fright, so the fact that it is not super evident, that makes me feel good about it. Thank you all. In terms of what you had said about how to approach a very difficult decision, I think that conceptually, the first thing to do is to just look at the possible solutions, which sometimes is a lot more complicated of a thing than it sounds. Is there room for a compromise, or is this a very binary situation, where there's only one or the other, and there's no middle ground? If that is the case, what sort of timeline are we looking at? Will there be an opportunity for us to reassess a year, five years, 10 years down the line? How final is this can certainly help weigh what you would want to do leading up to that decision. Of course, I have already talked about trying to build up a network of experts, trying to make sure that when I do make a decision, that there is a lot of knowledge behind it, a lot of strong evidence behind it. My background is in math, so I'm very much a numbers person where I can be. And talking to the people who will be most affected by the issue, not necessarily the experts on what's at hand, but the people whose lives could potentially be changed by decisions that we're making at this table. What is the absolute worst thing that could happen, should this go a certain way? What is the possible best thing that could happen? Really just getting a very objective outlook at the different possibilities, the solutions, and the ramifications of those solutions. I think that's the biggest thing, and folks sometimes skip that step, or don't quite give enough weight to it, in my opinion. This is something that comes up for me a lot in my role in IT. We do a lot of long-term strategic planning, where we are making decisions that will continue to affect the company potentially several decades on. So it is something that I'm pretty familiar with, and like I said, I am sort of a data-driven person, so if anything, that can sometimes be a bit of a weakness for me, that I may get too pulled into the numbers. So I keep falling back on talking to people, getting that idea, getting as many different perspectives as I can, to make sure that I understand it as well as I can, before I try to make a decision that will affect so many others. Thank you.
Alder Presum Morrow?
With your background in math, and, I mean, it's really impressive, with mathematics and actuaries as well. That's very high-level math, that's very impressive. One thing I want, one thing that did come up was like, some of the decisions that we make, I know when you deal with IT, you deal with people screaming on the phone and so on, but here, you're going to have some folks screaming at you here.
You're painting a rosy picture, Alder.
I'm serious.
Not always.
Not always, but I know when we had the business 51, we had business 51s, the lane reconfigurment at Stanley Street, I mean, that got very heated, and you're going to be tasked to make decisions that some people are not going to relax, and they're going to let you know that, by email, voicemail, here in person as well, trying to influence you for what they want. I mean, and that's something that you're going to have to think about, and it's not always an easy thing. And how do you think you'd be able to, how do you think you'd be able to deal with that?
Well, as I've said, I am a numbers person. My first impression to your question is to start logging that for data, to keep a record of who has contacted me, the level of the upset, the sorts of things that they're upset about, in order to understand, you know, what is coming up for folks. I mean, if someone is very upset and yelling at you, obviously, that can be a very difficult thing to endure in the moment, but it tells you a lot, not just in what they're saying, but the fact, and the way that they're saying it is very relevant, too. I have done a fair amount of canvassing, door-knocking, texting, that sort of thing for offices in the past, so I'm definitely familiar with that. Someone is just really upset about the fact that I'm here, in terms of that personality factor, I'm definitely familiar with that. I can appreciate how difficult it can be to sit up here and do what you do, and I do feel like it's something that I can withstand emotionally, if that is sort of addressing the brunt of your question, or is it?
I'm just dealing how you'd be able to deal with that, because, I mean, some of the topics, I mean, 90% of what we do, there's not too many people here, but there's that 10 to 15%, and we have some topics that are going to be up. I mean, trying to deal with business 51, the courthouse, and so on, and those, there are going to be some pretty heated talks that we're going to also have, and that's just why I wanted to make sure that you know, those are some of the things that we do deal with, and you might be here till 11 o'clock at night, or later at times. It hasn't been that bad for a while, but when things get going at times, you might be here for a while. And I do take it that you basically work from home a lot, that, so.
I do appreciate that. That is something significant about me as a candidate. I do work from home, I do live by myself, I live quite a solitary life, so this will be quite an adjustment for me to be in a very public forum, being addressed very publicly, as you've said. I guess I can say that I am a very emotionally stable person, and I think that people who know me personally can attest to that. So although I do not, I am not yelled at face-to-face on a daily basis, it is something I'm familiar with, that I feel that I can handle, to sort of read past that and not write people off because they're communicating it effectively, but to really understand what they're getting at, because there's a reason they're so upset. And a lot of people just want to feel like they're communicating that, and that you understand that, and that's a huge part of the puzzle there. Yes, I see you, I hear you, what you're saying is valid. What you're saying is valid. I understand why this is so incendiary, you know? There's sort of a give and take there, I think, between the members of the council and the people and trying to bridge that gap to.
And I would also say that you're doing this very well for someone who hasn't been in office or anything else and lives a completely solitary life, as you said.
Thank you.
All right. As a member of the common council and as a fourth district resident, I wanted to chat a little bit, too. So Lara, I know that what Alder Person Marrow had said happens. It's rare, but I've had people show up at my house when you're shoveling snow or cutting the grass or letting the dogs out or walking the dogs or you're at an event. It does happen, but it's not nearly as bad as the.
I didn't make it like that.
But yeah, Alder Person Niebohn was right. I mean, you've got to have a little bit of a thick skin and try not to take things personally and address people's concerns. Now, I know recently we got acquainted on social media. I also know that you have been friends with several of the existing alderpersons, several former alderpersons, several residents. And my question is, how are you going to make sure that the needs or interests of everybody in the fourth district is met and not just filling a niche or a certain group? And then a follow-up to that is, what's your favorite thing about our district and your least favorite thing about our district?
Well, to address the first half of that, I do not plan to only knock the doors of folks who voted a certain way. That is absolutely not going to be my approach to this office. As I have echoed tonight, I want to talk to absolutely everybody. I think that everyone is an expert in a particular area. I think that everyone has views that should be listened to and respected regardless of how they feel, especially on the local level when we're not even necessarily talking about these giant ideological divides. We're talking about day-to-day what can make our lives better. So I'm very happy to sort of reach across that aisle. I'm here to make new friends today. My favorite thing about the district, that's easy. It's Buchholz. I live a few blocks away. I am there very regularly just after my workday to go watch the sunset. It is just something that is very meaningful to me and grounding, particularly after a day of people yelling at me about things I can't directly fix. My least favorite thing, this is a cop-out answer, but all of the dogs because I feel like I can't possibly meet and be friends with them all and that is hard for me to accept.
My wife has started and she's trying, so maybe you guys can team up. All right. Lara, thank you very much. I'm going to ask you to be seated. We do have the other candidate, Mr. Hoffenbridl. I realize you came in late and I apologize. We would have had you both up there at the same time asking the same questions, but I'm going to have you come up now and let the council drill you, I mean, ask questions.
I feel bad because I've been sitting here listening to this young lady and it's kind of like cheating. I've heard some of the questions here and it's almost, I feel like it's almost unfair, but.
Mr. Hoffenbridl, we have your declaration of candidacy and a cover letter. I'm going to go the opposite direction now.
Thanks.
So we'll start with Alder Person Marrow.
All right. I saw what you put in, but you didn't put in like, why do you want this? I mean, you put down like things that you have done, but what made you decide to like throw your, what made you decide to throw the hat in to do this?
I have been in Stevens Point since college. I came here for my education and I stayed. One of the big reasons is I love this town. I have fallen in love with this town. I moved away to Madison for a year and I came back. I moved to Omaha to be closer to my grandson and I moved back. This town has so much to offer and it is such an incredible city, but it can be better. And one of the reasons I'm running is I want to help make this city better than it is. I ran years ago, what year was that?
2004, 2003, 2004 election.
Yeah. I love this town. I love the people in it. That's what makes this city. It's just one of those towns that you don't get when you live in a bigger city. It's just the community and the atmosphere and everything else that goes with it. Yeah, that's why I'm running.
Alder Person Fishler.
So I guess one question I have, because it's a nonpartisan position, how would you describe representative government?
How do I?
How would you describe representative government?
Representative government is talking to the people. What do the people feel? How do they feel? What do they think? Like, I'm sure she had mentioned, I've already been knocking on doors. I walk my dog every night. We go through Buchholz and Pifner Park and on the way, we stop and actually talk to people when they're out mowing their lawn or doing something. That's what representative government is. It's me representing the north side, the fourth district, on what we feel would be the best part to go with this city.
Thank you.
Alder Person Lang. If you don't have anything, that's acceptable.
I was hoping for the thick-skinned question.
I was going to, but they moved on. I was just like, say.
But you go talking. So looking through your assets to the position, I see great listener and that's what I like heard you just speak about, too. You want to go around and listen to the people. What do you feel that the fourth district is speaking to at this point that you would represent well?
It's the housing issue. A lot of them, affordable housing, that there's, they feel that there's so much $1,200 a month rentals and not enough $650, $750 that the common person can actually afford, the person that makes 16 bucks an hour like I do. You know, in their affordability, their budget, that's their big issue right now.
Alder Person Shuda.
You said that you moved back because you love the town, but you think it could be better.
Yeah.
Just off the top, yeah.
Sure. This city has so much to offer, but at the same time, it's lacking in so much. Like, just a couple of weeks ago, Monaca had Beefarama. Okay, Beefarama, they celebrate meat. They have a parade. They have a downtown thing going. They bring in 10,000 people to celebrate meat. We don't have anything like that in Stevens Point. We need something like that in Stevens Point. We don't utilize the park enough, Buchholz and Pifner Parks, at all. There should be something going on in those parks every weekend. I mean, we are missing out so much and especially with Stevens Point being right in the center of the state, we should be drawing people into things like that and making the money.
He's for the convention center. I looked at Director Kramer. He's got a few open weekends up at Pifner, so we're going to get those filled up. Alder Person Niebohn.
Maybe we need a beet weekend for the vegans in the community. I guess I would just say the same thing I said about developing a thick skin because a lot of people will come here and let us know their opinions in very loud voices and questionable language and.
I used to work at Spectrum, okay? People walk in the door, they're screaming at you as soon as they're walking in the door. First thing, okay, let's calm down. How can we take care of you?
Gotcha.
Alder Person Plazas.
Were you here for my comments when I?
I was not.
You weren't? Okay, all right. If you get this position, please follow up with the Madison Elementary School. They're having sidewalk issues.
Okay.
And they have some really bad sidewalk problems. Thank you.
Alder Person Burt.
No comment this time either, just thanks for stepping up and putting yourself out there.
Alder Person Keimer.
Yeah, I guess as a long-term resident, how do you think or how have you noticed District Four, your neighborhood, the city, changing over the years and what has stayed the same?
It has just boomed, hasn't it? I mean, I'm also an Uber driver on weekends, so I get to talk to the people. And the people that come back into town, especially I can't wait for this weekend, it's homecoming weekend, they just like, wow, this whole city, whole town has changed so much. Everything from the downtown and just the square out to the east side and they're just amazed.
Thank you.
Alder Shore.
Thank you. It's probably appropriate that we're talking so much about housing because what we understand about the position being open is related to a difficult house search on McCura's Park. I guess I want to echo the question from earlier about the sort of the tough calls. There are issues that, you know, you kind of get like a clear sense of a unified, you know, view in your constituency, noise from the stadium has been, you know, for me in this part of town. But back to that question of what about if there's no obvious, if constituent sentiment isn't just, you know, on one side of it?
It's a 50-50. Sometimes you've just got to go with your gut. You know, what you look forward, what will be the best thing for the city, in my opinion? You know, if it comes down to that going, okay, I've got 15 people on this side, 15 people on this side telling me, then I have to, that's why they're, they want me to be their representative, to make that final choice. And I have no problems making a decision when it comes to that.
Alder Person Christiansen.
Sometimes you find yourself in a tough position where you have to choose between, after you've examined an issue, between what's best for your district and what's best for the city and they're not always perfectly aligned. How do you handle a situation like that?
Again, it's the long term. It's the big goal. We're here for the city. We all have little parts that make the big city, okay? Sometimes you have to give up a little bit in your neighborhood in order to make the greater better. That happens.
September 23rd, 2021, this room was packed. That's when I got appointed. I took my oath of office at 12:15 in the morning, actually on September 24th because it was the next day. Do you think you'd be able to, if that was the situation tonight, would you still stand up at the end of the meeting and be interviewed and still put yourself out there knowing that that's what you may end up?
That's part of the job, is putting yourself out there. You have to stand up and take the criticism, take the heat, bring it on.
Okay, thank you. And as a member of the common council and a resident of the fourth district, I'm going to ask you the same questions. I know you two know people on the current council. I know you know past alderpersons. How are you going to separate those relationships that you have existing from the relationships that I hope you're going to build through the residents of the fourth district? And then, what's your favorite thing and your least favorite thing about the fourth?
Well, ask any of my friends. I have let them down every once in a while. Mike knows, Mr. Mayor knows that I'm a part of, I'm the captain of a trivia team. Sometimes, again, the greater of the team is more important than just the individuals. Sorry. You've got to make that decision and you do. That's part about the.
Even if I was right?
What's that?
I said, even if I was right?
Even if you were right.
Well, that never happens.
Come on now, come on.
Move on, move on.
Least favorite, most favorite?
Favorite thing about the north side is the people. The community is just incredible there. I love the people. I have yet to meet anybody on the north side that hasn't, when I stick out my hand, they shake mine and I shake theirs. The least, the worst or the biggest problem, again, probably the housing. And some of it on the north side is, it's older. It's the older part of town, it just is. So yeah, just to make it better, just the housing issue.
Thank you. I appreciate that. You can have a seat.
Thanks.
Alder Person, the way this is going to work is clerk is going to hand out ballots. These are not anonymous. They are open record, public record. So we'll hand a ballot out to each person and you will write the name to the best of your ability of the candidate you wish to select to represent the fourth district. It's always hard because in a situation like this, the only people that really don't have a say are the people of the district that you're picking for, but I am confident that you'll make the right choice. Put those names on and then we'll have the clerk go around and collect comptroller treasure. Can you verify the count, please?
Sure.
And these will be publicly read. I should note that we have 10 alderpersons. In the event of a tie, the mayor does have the option to break the tie. I hope we don't need to do that.
Either one. Is it a simple majority?
It is.
Mm-hmm.
Say simple, but it's really not that simple.
Somebody doesn't write it.
I would like to personally thank both of the candidates for stepping forward. I know it's been said here tonight, but it does take a special person to care enough to get out there, put yourself out there, to all sorts of public scrutiny. And I hope that regardless of what happens tonight, both of the candidates will remain involved. We have the opportunity to do that through committees, commissions, or just showing up at the meetings.
You asked to read them off as?
Yes, please.
Okay. Yep, that's typically how we do it.
Marvin. Lara. 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 Marv. Lara. Marv. Lara.
Okay, so I've got seven votes Lara, three votes Marv, so it'd be Lara.
Lara, congratulations. I need you to approach the lectern now. Are you sure?
The people will decide if they're sure in April.
We're going to have the clerks. Where are you in?
Do you prefer to be sworn or affirm? Does it matter?
Just swear or.
Swear or affirm? Do you have a preference?
I would affirm.
So you're just going to raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Lara Broderick.
Who has been elected by the common council.
Who has been elected by the common council.
Thank you. To the office of the fourth district alderperson.
To the office of the fourth district alderperson.
For a term effective October 16th, 2023.
For a term effective October 16th, 2023.
And expires April 15th, 2024.
And expires April 15th, 2024.
In the city of Stevens Point.
In the city of Stevens Point.
County of Portage, Wisconsin.
County of Portage, Wisconsin.
I do solemnly affirm that I will support.
I do solemnly affirm that I will support.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I don't remember it being that long.
I don't think they're actually, they're just signed. I don't worry about it. God, I'm tired. Also, thank you.
Alder Person Broderick, I would ask that you grab a seat and sit up at the table. We'll all scoot over. We have two more items that we need to deal with tonight. Alder Person Christiansen, you just add a chair at the end of the table, please.
Sure.
Just for tonight. We'll get you a name tag and everything squared away for next one. We'll have you sit out of order.
Draw of order.
The next item on the agenda is really a matter of just filling the void. The fourth district alderperson has sat on the finance committee, personnel committee, and board of park commissioners in the interest of. In the interest of simplicity, I would ask that that appointment carry through with our new representative, Laura Broderick, and seek your permission to appoint the, or seek your affirmation of the appointment to the finance committee, personnel committee, and board of parks commissioners. Moved by Christensen, seconded by Niebohn. Discussion. Hearing none, I think we can do a voice vote here, right? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I voted, dang it. That wasn't, I didn't vote. All those opposed?
Phew, sorry. Had a little verklempt.
And that is approved. I now need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 sub 1 sub E for deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive bargaining or bargaining reasons are required a closed session. This is for the negotiation of terms for a potential sale of property to Portage County for the potential construction of a jail and law enforcement center.
So moved.
I'm sorry, so Lang?
I get it.
Morrow seconds. We do need a roll call on this. So clerk, please.
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Broderick?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Plasanz?
Aye.
Niebohn?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Lang?
Aye.
Fischler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
A video of this meeting is available for viewing on the city's website, stevenspoint.com/videos.